Good afternoon, it is four o'clock and I want to call a meeting to order. I'm Bill Luckett, Mayor of the City of Clarksdale. Back on February 12th, 2015, I called this special meeting. Ms. Clerk, I would like for you to put the notice of the special meeting in the service of process about said meeting to be served on the city commissioners as part of the record.
Okay, I have that.
Would you call the roll board?
Commissioner Seals?
Here.
Commissioner Plunk?
Here.
Commissioner Moten?
On talking.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
All right, city clerk is present.
I only require that the city clerk and the city attorney be present although any other department has a person to attend. And thank you Chief Reed for sergeant at arms duties. Would y'all join me in standing for a moment of silent prayer? My reason for calling this meeting is straightforward. I cannot sit idly by and allow Clarksdale Public Utilities, an asset owned by the citizens and rate public of Clarksdale, to be run in a manner which plays fast and loose with public money by not collecting all rates, fees, and other charges; to be run in such a manner which condones the use of public employment for personal gain; to be run in such a manner which provides special privileges for a select few; to be run in such a manner that does not follow sound fiscal and management policies by allowing a material weakness of internal controls to continue; to be run in such a manner which erodes the public trust in the utility and in government in general. As mayor, I am required pursuant to Mississippi Code, Section 21-15-9, quote, "to be active and vigilant in enforcing all laws and ordinances," end quote, and, quote, "to cause all other officers to be dealt with promptly for any neglect or violation of duty," end quote. This board is the governing authority of the City of Clarksdale. It has a duty and an obligation to ensure that members of the commissions we appoint conduct business and make decisions that are fair, honest, and above reproach. If we do nothing and condone the actions of Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp, we are not discharging our duties. Regardless of what some may say, right is right and wrong is wrong. The facts may not always be pretty and may make some people uncomfortable, but I will not ignore the facts. By letter dated February 13th, 2015, I advise Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp of this meeting, Ms. Clerk, I directed copies of the letter sent to these individuals and the return of the personal service of said letters upon these individuals be made a part of the record. In the letter, I stated to each of them as follows, and each got the same letter. The reference is notice of special meeting of the Board of Mayor and Commissioners to consider whether to remove Jimmy Wiley, Donald Clark, and Golden Sharp as Commissioners on the Clarksdale Public Utilities Commission for inefficiency or incompetency or any other cause pursuant to Mississippi Code, Section 21-27-15. Dear, and the name follows. At a special meeting on Friday, February 20th, at four o'clock P.M., I intend to bring before the Board of Mayor and Commissioners, the City Board, for consideration whether to remove you as a Commissioner on the Clarksdale Public Utilities Commission for inefficiency or incompetency or any other cause pursuant to Mississippi Code, Section 21-27-15. The City Board will consider the effect of your vote to reinstate Ms. Maple Melton, the Business Office Supervisor, on January 29th, 2015, after a lengthy hearing in which unrebutted testimony and documentary evidence was presented concerning multiple policy violations by her, including the giving of false information to the auditors for CPUC, allowing certain customers to not pay their bills for months with no penalty or disconnection of service, removing customers from the cutoff list even though no payment was made, placing herself in an exempt category from cutoff, and allowing customers to establish utility service without paying the required deposit. The City Board will also consider your failure to take action on February 10th, 2015, regarding the transfer of funds by Ms. Melton from an account of the Clarksdale Municipal School District to pay her own bill and to take effective steps to cure material weakness and internal controls found by the auditors for CPUC. Copies of the transcript of the January 29th, 2015, hearing have been made available to the City Board for our review prior to the meeting. Specifically, your actions or inactions as set forth above compromises the safe, economic, and efficient operation of the utility by allowing for the loss of revenue by failing to collect all rates, fees, and other charges, allowing material weaknesses and internal controls to continue, which makes possible more illegal transactions; the failure to allow the General Manager to enforce reasonable measures to prevent financial mismanagement and to enforce your own policies; not investigating possible employee illegal activity when it was brought to your attention; failing to ensure that all rates, fees, and other charges are collected in order to maintain compliance of the city's sewer revolving fund loan with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. Your actions or inactions violate your oath of office and the public trust and constitute inefficiency, incompetency, and other cause which I believe justify your removal as a CPU Commissioner. You may respond to these charges in writing prior to this meeting or orally at the meeting with the City Board with counsel of your choosing at your expense or another personal representative appointed by you and offer any response you may have concerning these matters. Sincerely, Bill Luckett, Mayor. All these Commissioners, as well as the city clerk, city attorney, CPU Board Chairman George Miller, and CPU Board Attorney David Hunt were copied with this letter. To date, I've had no written response to this letter by any of the three CPU Commissioners. This Board has the authority pursuant to Section 21-27-15 of the Mississippi Code and under our city ordinance, Section 20-83 (f), to, quote, "remove any member," end quote, for, quote, "inefficiency or incompetency or any other cause," end quote. Ms. Clerk, I direct that you please make a copy of that section of the Mississippi Code and of our city ordinance along with each of the CPU Commissioners' respective oaths of office as part of the record. On January 29th, 2015, the Clarksdale Public Utilities Commission held a due process hearing for the Business Office Supervisor, Maple Melton, who had been terminated by Clarksdale Public Utilities General Manager Ray Luring on December 23rd, 2014. The hearing resulted in over 300 pages of testimony and discussion and over 500 pages of exhibits. Ms. Clerk, I direct that you make a part of the record the transcript of the hearing and footage and the exhibits, please.
Okay.
Nine witnesses testified concerning the Clarksdale Public Utilities policy violations committed by Ms. Melton. Unrebutted testimony and documentary evidence was presented concerning multiple policy violations by Ms. Melton, including: A) Giving false and misleading information to the auditors for CPUC; B) Allowing certain customers not to pay their bills for months with no penalty or disconnection of services in disregard of the extension policy; C) Removing customers from the cutoff list even though no payment was made; D) Placing herself, Ms. Melton, in an exempt category from cutoff; E) Allowing customers to establish utility service without paying the required deposit or paying off an old account. I have provided each of the city Commissioners with a document entitled, quote, "Issues, Exhibits, Citations to the Record," end quote, with reference to the transcript and exhibits, which clearly shows the policy violations of the Clarksdale Public Utilities Commission. Ms. Clerk, I direct that document entitled "Issues, Exhibits, and Citations" be made a part of this record, please. The outside independent auditors for CPU found in a random testing of controls over accounts receivable in collections of 39 different accounts, 10 accounts that failed to comply with Clarksdale Public Utilities policy regarding cutoffs. At the January 29th hearing involving Ms. Melton, the CPU Commission received evidence showing that numerous accounts were coded by Maple Melton so that the account would never be placed in a cutoff list, including Ms. Melton's account itself, Hopson Law Firm, which represents her son in a criminal matter in DeSoto County, Two Brothers, Wangs and Thangs, which shared the same address as Ms. Melton's home address for billing purposes, City Commissioner Buster Moten's building at 347 Isakuna. It was unrebutted that Maple Melton made these entries. In fact, there was testimony that each Clarksdale Public Utilities employee who had access to the computer system had here's or her own unique password, which prevents the use of another's password. The auditors also found in the random testing over accounts receivable in collections of the same 39 accounts, 12 accounts that failed to comply with the Clarksdale Public Utilities policy regarding extensions. Once again, at the January 29th hearing, the CPU Commissioners heard unrebutted testimony and received documentary evidence of where Maple Melton failed to follow the CPU policies and where she provided unauthorized extensions for herself, Hopson Law Firm, Two Brothers, Wangs and Thangs, and City Commissioner Buster Moten, as well as other accounts. Yet, in the face of this overwhelming evidence, Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp thought it appropriate to reinstate Ms. Melton without instituting any procedures to prevent the reoccurrence of this wrongdoing. I submit to this Board that the said three CPU Commissioners who voted to reinstate Ms. Melton displayed, one, a willful disregard of their own policies and procedures designed for the proper operation, management, and control of the utility systems of this city, and, two, failed to perform faithfully the duties of their office, which constitutes inefficiency, incompetency, and other cause pursuant to the Mississippi Code Statute of 411. I submit that the vote made by said Commissioners warrant their removal from the CPU Commission. Even after the due process hearing meeting and vote on January 29th, 2015, but prior to the February 10th, 2015, CPU Commission's regular meeting, each CPU Commissioner received along with his agenda, copies of documents showing Ms. Melton transferred a $379.76 credit in a Clarksdale Municipal School District account to her own personal account. At the February 10th, 2015, meeting, this transfer, evidence by these documents, was explained to the CPU Commissioners. Even in the face of this additional evidence, Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp voted not to suspend Ms. Melton without pay pending a completion of an investigation into this matter, but instead allowed her to remain in her position with no restrictions. Ms. Clerk, I directed the affidavit of the Chairman of the CPU Commission, George Miller, be made a part of the record. I submit to you that this evidences a willingness by the said CPU Commissioners to allow the corruption to continue. In effect, the three CPU Commissioners under scrutiny approved the wrongful conversion and misappropriation of public funds on employees' personal benefit. This constitutes inefficiency, incompetency, and other cause which according to law warrants the removal of Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp. Also, on February 10th, 2015, Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp, in response to the auditors' letters of December 18th, 2014, and January 28th, 2015, which concerned the, quote, "material weaknesses in internal controls," end quote, voted to inform the auditors that the CPU Commission intended to purchase new software to be installed at the earliest in the first quarter of next year, 2016, rather than terminate Ms. Melton, who was responsible for the fraudulent entries and violations of policies, instead of meaningfully dealing with the weakness in internal controls. Moreover, they ignored whether their actions may affect the final water pollution control revolving loan agreement, the agreement entered into between the city and the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. The loan agreement requires that CPU shall use its best efforts to collect all rates, fees, and other charges due yet, and the failure to do so may be considered a default under the agreement. That very agreement was signed by Mr. Clark last year. The actions of Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp may be considered an act of default of the agreement, which could result in penalties to the city in the form of accelerated repayment or an increased interest rate, along with notifying financial credit rating services. Ms. Clerk, I directed the copy of that agreement, the revolving loan agreement, be made a part of this record.
Okay.
I submit to you that the vote of Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp on February 10th, 2015, constituted a failure to adequately respond to the letters of the auditors or to correctly take into account the effect of the agreement that constitutes inefficiency, incompetency, and other cause warranting their removal. The evidence is overwhelming that Mrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp have taken actions as CPU Commissioners that are in total disregard of the public interest. By analogy, on the school district account transfer, if you had an account at a bank and a bank employee took money from your account and transferred it to the bank employee's account and paid her bills with your money, and when you reported this to the bank, the bank did nothing to the employee and did not put the money back in your account, would you do business with that bank? Would you have trust or faith in such a bank? The answer is clearly no. You would go to another bank and you would go to the authorities and press criminal charges. In this case, the public cannot go to another utility, even though many may not trust or have faith in CPU. That is why we have to act to restore public confidence and public trust in the Clarksdale Public Utilities, and the only way to do so is to remove the Commissioners who condone multiple violations of CPU's own policies; who condone allowing a special few to avoid paying their utility bills in a timely manner without penalty or disconnection; who condone and continue to employ a person who transfers money from our public school system to her own account to pay her own utility bills; who refuse to act and implement reasonable fiscal policies and honor the obligations of Clarksdale Public Utilities. We must act. This Board's only proper action is to remove Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp from the CPU Commission. At this time, I will recognize any or all of those three gentlemen and/or their attorney to speak. Does anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Attorney?
Good evening.
Are you going to speak for all three?
I am.
All right. How much time do you feel you need?
In light of the stacked deck, I don't think it'll be long. I want to interpose my objections, my legal objections, on behalf of the three Commissioners that my understanding was that this was going to be treated as a personnel hearing, a confidential, a meeting not open to the public, that it wasn't going to be a political sideshow, that these were going to be discussed in an administrative-type hearing before the members of the City Council. But since the city has chosen to make these matters public, matters which are by statute confidential, matters which by state law opens the city up to defamatory charges, in light of the way that this meeting has been carried out and in light of the manner that it is being conducted, I don't feel that it would do my clients any justice, going to get any justice here today, to speak for them, but since I am here, I will point out to the members of this commission that I personally was present at the due process hearing for Maple Melton on January 29th of 2014. I heard all of the witnesses testify and cross-examine them. I reviewed all of the documentary evidence that came in, including these material weaknesses that the auditors are alleged to have found, and how these accounts were randomly drawn, and we're talking about some 39 accounts out of 5,000 to 5,500 accounts and the findings and the computer trail of electronically stored information that's left in that computer that CPU about who entered it and when and the dates. And after having heard all of that evidence and the fact that Maple Melton was a 27-year employee, had never been written up, no bad job performances at all had ever been, you know, was in her file that they could appoint to, that all of the evidence was introduced, that the Commissioners did weigh that evidence, they acted as any reasonably prudent fact finding could have acted, and they considered that information and they deliberated on it, and they made a decision that basically was that in the absence of any evidence to show that she had any warnings, had ever been written up, had been nothing other than a good employee who collected accounts in the Clarksdale Water Department, that they put her on probation for six months. They upheld her suspension without pay. They told her never to hold another account. There was testimony that not only was the few people's name that you gave, Mr. Mayor, there were one of the Commissioners, Mr. Higgins, his account had been held, and he didn't pay his bill, and there was testimony that as far back as when Marvin Caraway was here, that the Mayor, Richard Webster, went three years without paying a bill. There were other instances where that certain political figures and public figures in this town did not pay their bill. I don't have all of the names, but all of that's in the transcript. But on behalf of my clients, we'll meet whatever decision that this Board makes, because we can only view it as retaliation, that the only Board, publicly Board, including the Mayor and the City Council, that's a majority African-American, is on the CPU. The Board of Supervisors of Oklahoma County is majority white. This Commission here, the Mayor Board of Commission is majority white. We do not believe that the numbers at CPU show that African-Americans have any meaningful role other than on this Commission, and if you remove all three of them here for retaliating against a decision that was made by these three Commissioners after hearing all of the evidence that Mr. Hunt presented to them and told them that if you believed based on the preponderance of the evidence, or substantial evidence, as he referred to, that you could take action, not that it was mandatory, they weighed the evidence and they made a decision, and I can only view it that this Board's action to remove them would be in retaliation for not doing what the good white political people here in Clarksdale wanted done, and that will be the end of my statement.
Carlos Miles and Brendan Field, you have parking lot blocks, you need to move your vehicles ASAP. One traffic to Carlos Miles and Brendan Field.
Lay it around.
Is there a motion based on the record to remove Messrs. Wiley, Clark, and Sharp as Commissioners with the Clarksdale Public Utilities Commission for inefficiency, incompetency, or other cause?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion that this Board remove Mr. Wiley, Mr. Clark, and Mr. Sharp for incompetent, for two calls.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions, comments, or questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Seales.
Mr. Melton apparently is the object of this meeting here, along with the decision that the CPU Board made to reinstate her. She was not the only customer service representative to extend the bills of customers. I think there were, there are three other customer service representatives who have that authority. For some reason, the auditor just centered his investigation at Ms. Melton and did not even check the records of the three other customer service representatives. I think the investigation perhaps needs to be continued. Right now, it seems to be, seems to be one-sided. And you mentioned that $188,467 in the Lincoln accounts had been noted.
No, sir, I didn't mention that.
Well, the auditor did.
All right.
Okay. However, he does not give us a breakdown of that amount. He does not indicate whether they are commercial accounts, residential accounts, he doesn't even specify the amount. And whether or not the amount is actually- And whether or not the amount is actually accurate. So I would have some question about that.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to say something too, as well. I too believe that this is just one-sided. This could very well be a witch hunt. This also too is a situation to where these auditors are just focusing in on one particular person. I concur with Commissioner Sales saying that there was other people too as well who had authority, but they will not identify. Also too, my name was mentioned in that particular situation as far as my account being held, also to Commissioner Bo Plonk. He had his bill held too as well, but yet his name was not mentioned. Is it because he's white? You know, is this a way that our mayor has to divide our town, black people against white people? We're trying to make Clarksdale broke. And when all I hear is black people did not pay their bill, black people was involved in a scam or what have you and did wrong, well, there are white people who did wrong too. Richard Wilson, as his name was mentioned. Bo Plonk, who all bills that he held, was mentioned. Bobby Huggins, name was mentioned. Why are these, and also too, WRX, Paul Wilson, along with his wife, their bill was held too as well. Why was their name not mentioned? All these are white people. Why are just black people's names being mentioned? Something wrong. Something stinks. And it's all about black people's stink. And white people are smelling like roses, and that's wrong.
Ken, will you say something?
Anything, sir.
Anybody else, Mr. Plonk?
No.
I'm ready to call a question. All in favor of the motion removing Commissioners Clark, Wiley, and Sharp from the CPU Commission for inefficiency, incompetency, or other cause? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ms. Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Sales?
Nay.
Commissioner Plonk?
Aye.
Commissioner Moten?
Without an affirmative investigation, nay.
Commissioner Murphy?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion was effective today.
Motion carries by a three-to-two vote. I broke the tie vote. Any further business on our agenda today, Ms. Clark?
No, that's it.
There are motions to adjourn this meeting.
I'd like to motion that we're done.
There are seconded.
Negative.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Your meeting is adjourned.